All righty, good morning. Housing Authority Board of Directors, and over to you Director Harrington.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, August 1st, Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Director Harrington. Washington County Board of Commissioners is now meeting as the Housing Authority Board of Directors for Washington County for this regular session, August 1st, 2023. Director Rogers?
Here.
Director Savara?
Here.
Director Roper?
Here.
Director Treese?
Here.
Director Willey?
Here.
Director Fai?
President.
Director Harrington?
Here. Thank you, everyone. We have a full complement of the seven of us today. The next item on the agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for any member of our community to speak to the Housing Authority Board of Directors for up to two minutes a person. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone in the audience or online?
I did not see anyone in the audience sign up. Would anyone sitting in the audience like to provide comment for up to two minutes on any housing-related topic? Give you a moment, just utilize your hand or come forward. Not seeing anyone in the room. Would any members online viewing this meeting wish to provide comment for up to two minutes? As I've stated here, give you a second to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Director Harrington.
All right then, we'll move on to today's consent agenda, which consists of three items, two sets of minutes from prior Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, and then an additional item to write off the accounts of past tenants in the low-rent public housing program. What are the wishes of the board?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? And we have a second. Excuse me. All those in favor of adopting today's consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. We have one action item today, so I would like to invite staff up for this item. This is to authorize our interim executive director to execute a memorandum of understanding with Metro, our regional government, regarding an affordable housing development at 3140 Southwest 209th Avenue. Andrew, please.
Thank you, Director Harrington, Chair Harrington, member of the board. For the record, my name is Andrew Crampton. I'm Development Manager at the Housing Authority of Washington County. Clerk Moss, do we have Metro staff that have signed in to be promoted as well? Okay.
Patrick and?
Yeah, and Andrea, I believe?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And we also have the interim executive director online as well. Andrew, if you could just introduce all of the various folks who are online, or you were Clerk Moss?
So we have Andrea Pastor with Metro staff, who's been working closely with us on the site acquisition program for a period of several years, and Patrick McLaughlin as well to add any context to my presentation or answer any questions about Metro's program. So I'll go ahead and get started. Just so for some context, so folks know, for Metro's housing bond implementation, 90% of the funding was administered by local implementation partners, as you know. Divided up, as you can see up there, Washington County had 114-unit goal, and then divided within Beaverton and Hillsborough as well. And there's also 10% of the funding that's administered by Metro's site acquisition program, which is intended to coordinate with the local implementation partners, but really be led by the Metro staff, Patrick and Andrea, that are online to look for site acquisition opportunities. Just a dashboard of program progress across the region. As you can see, there's a couple other projects that are in Washington County broadly, but are within the city of Hillsborough and Beaverton. Washington County is a little bit behind, just due to some of the sites that were being looked at through due diligence, not working out. But we have a great opportunity, and one of the unique structures that we're proposing is to work both as the implementation partner and ultimately a developer through the Washington County's Housing Authority that will help with some of the timeline and allow these projects to catch up. So this is the site above, as well as some of the other sites in the region, the seven projects. Some of the location priorities that were created through the site acquisition plan is to really prioritize locations that are near amenities sought by low-income people, looking at parks, shopping, schools, and transit for amenities and lifestyle, and then also looking for areas where especially communities of color are at risk of displacement or with limited affordability options. And the lowest site really meets these parameters. There's good transit access, as we know, along TV Highway, as well as lots of long-term planning for additional transit investment, available parks, shopping, and schools in the area. There's a Safeway just right adjacent to the site for grocery amenities. And then also, as we talk about a low and long term and talk about transit investments and amenity investments, this is a good opportunity to really invest in affordable housing to help limit displacement. We'll talk about some of the planned programming, but it's likely that family housing would kind of be the driver of the programming, which will tie in well with the need to really limit displacement as these investments continue. So really, really good site. It's a site that we're really excited about, and the site acquisition team has done good work to get to this place. Some of the benefits thinking long-term in the action today is to really have the Housing Authority be the project developer as we frame the programming for the site. Some of the advantages of that is it allows the development team, really from day one, to begin community input and bringing in stakeholders, not only on the programming of the site, but also the development team as well, thinking about input on architecture, service providers, contractor, so that way there's feedback and input from day one. And then additionally, with some of the resources that the Housing Authority can bring with our federal designation, our move-to-work designation, we'll be able to bring additional resources, whether that's through some funding grants for programs, but also using our available public housing allocation. HUD has put together a program where housing authorities that have a set housing allocation, public housing, that isn't being utilized, can convert those to project-based vouchers. So that's something we'll analyze as we do our underwriting and our fundraising, as well as thinking about our overall voucher allocation pool. This would be a great project to put in project-based vouchers. And really, the idea is for the team to come together this spring through our procurement and our community outreach to understand programming and team, and look to early 2024 state funding applications. As we know, the legislature had a big allocation this year for affordable housing, $600 million in the state lift program. The state's going to be doing their outreach this fall on how to structure that funding and come up with a timeline, but it's generally understood early 2024 likely will be when those funding applications come online. So the goal is to really have an application ready to be able to pair with the remaining balance of the Metro site acquisition program, just $12.9 million. That will go towards both the ALC, the acquisition, and then also gap funding. So the idea is that the state lift program would be the second public resource to pair with Metro bond funds. Some of the things to think through with the MOU that we intend to work with Metro on is just establishing roles for due diligence, community engagement, project components, and really set the parameters for the Housing Authority to develop the property in collaboration with Metro. Once Metro acquires the site and we go through kind of the set programming ideas and concepts, we'll then work with Metro on an exclusive negotiating agreement, and then ultimately a disposition and development agreement. The intent is the Housing Authority would be the developer and then ultimately the owner of the affordable housing site. And then thinking through other shared values and priorities, and also the advisory group as well, is really the goal for this MOU. This is the general project timeline. It's relatively aggressive, but kind of sets a framework if things go well with the overall site, starting the project advisory committee and fall to help inform the project team selection. The site will then be acquired by Metro in late November, early December, and then again, the funding applications in early spring are in early 2024, and then Metro in agreement, and then late financial closing at the end of the year or early 2025. So I'll invite the Metro staff, if there's anything to add as well, and then we can also open it up for discussion with members of the board for any questions for the process, and then if the board does approve, authorizing the interim director to negotiate and execute an MOU.
Chair Harrington and directors, I think the only thing we would, you know, be excited to add would just be that, you know, we're looking at this project as an opportunity to really do a bit of implementation of some of the strategies that have started to emerge from the equitable development strategy that is, you know, being finalized right now by the community coalition along TV Highway, and we can see that there will already be some definite elements that we're going to try to work into how this development comes about, and we're excited about this partnership.
Was there anything more from the staff report before we turn to board questions and comments?
Nothing further, Director Harrington.
Okay, thank you. Directors, do you have any questions first? I do. On the project timeline, you mentioned that this is relatively aggressive. I would say the converse of that is the Almonica Station site. I am relieved that the developer, and I believe SEPA is involved with that site now. It's taken many years, and so that's on the other extreme. And I can imagine that things may happen, but I would be very saddened to think that we go from relatively aggressive to five-plus years out, as has happened with that Almonica site. So I'm just a little bit concerned about how things go from final closing to actual construction as well. So we'll see. It just takes too long.
Agreed.
Thank you, Andrew. All righty then. So we have a proposal before us, and I would like to ask the Board of Directors for a motion to authorize our interim executive director to negotiate and execute a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with Metro, our regional government, regarding this affordable housing development at 3140 Southwest 209th Avenue.
I move to approve the motion and allow the interim executive director to begin negotiations on the MOU.
A second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero, and thank you for our Metro staff for also participating in this meeting today. Appreciate it. Okay, that then takes us to the second opportunity for public comment. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Director Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up, but would any member that is in the room like to provide comment on any housing-related topic for up to five minutes? Give you a chance to raise your hand or start to come forward. Not seeing anyone in the room. Would any members online wish to provide comment for up to five minutes on any housing-related topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Director Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Are there any announcements from our Board of Directors?
Just wanted to give some kudos to the staff. I was able to participate in my role at Oregon Housing Community Services in partnership with the staff at the Housing Authority in some community engagement over the last month around some really important shelter conversations that are happening across the county, and the staff's ability to just engage in these conversations with community and to be thoughtful about sort of all of the different variables coming into play, I think, has just been, I've just been really heartened by it. We're seeing a lot, under Governor Kotek's executive order, we're seeing a lot of, you know, of these wrestling in each local community with how do we support people that are experiencing unsheltered homelessness? How do we build more infrastructure for this? And it's just interesting thinking about the way the county has been approaching these conversations, you know? In no way are conversations perfect. We're not striving for perfection for sure, but I think I've just seen the staff and the team really being able to kind of roll up their sleeves and engage in some of these hard conversations in a really effective way. So I just want to echo that, and I think we're seeing, you know, just that urgency, Director Harrington, that you're getting at, especially around how we're responding to the crisis of homelessness in front of us. So it's all connected, right? Building affordable housing is so important and connected to the problem of homelessness, but we're seeing that responsiveness that I think is really important as part of the emergency response. So really excited to partner with the staff and kind of learn their process, and appreciate being invited into it.
Thank you for mentioning that. Yeah, our staff is awesome, and they are really trying every technique and engaging in the community. In fact, I'm a little envious that compared to members of the county commission, you're able to fly below the radar and attend because we, as much as some of us wanted to attend, we were asked to not attend because our mere presence shifts the focus of the meeting. And so we are benefited by the high level of communication that our staff has with us before an event, during an event, and after an event. So we're very much on the journey, but thank you so much for recognizing our really excellent good work from staff, and also to our community members for showing up and learning more and engaging and being open. So it makes a difference. Director Roper, do you have anything, just to make sure?
No, I don't have anything. Sorry, I was having a little hard time connecting and lost track of time, but.
It's okay. No, this has been great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate having the two of you serve on our Housing Authority Board of Directors, and every now and again, I forget to check in with our folks who are attending in the hybrid mode, so that's why I just wanted to double-check. Any other Board of Director announcements? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn today's Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. We are hereby adjourned. Take care. Have a great month of August.
All righty. Welcome back, commissioners, and over to you, Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting of Tuesday, August 1st. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is now meeting this regular session, August 1st, 2023. Commissioner Willey?
Here.
Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
President.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public communication. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the room, but I'll give a call. Would anyone in our audience like to provide comments for up to two minutes on any county-related topic? Give you just a second to raise your hand or start to come forward. Not seeing anyone. Would any members viewing this meeting via Zoom like to provide comment on any county-related topic for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. The next item on our agenda is approval of today's consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of eight items, one set of minutes, three items from Clean Water Services, three items from land use and transportation, and our newest item, item eight, is an action to authorize funding and implementation of the West Side Commons perimeter fencing project. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move for approval of the consent.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving today's consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we move on to proclamations, and I would like to invite our Public Health Division Manager, Marie Bowman-Davis, and two additional guests to take us through the proclamation to declare August 2023 as National Breastfeeding Month in Washington County. Very important to our health, please.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Marie Bowman-Davis. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. I'm the Public Health Division Manager and the local Public Health Administrator in Washington County. Today, I am joined by our fantastic staff member, Jeanette Corthell?
Corthell.
Corthell, darn it! I'm gonna get it right one day. It's new. And our guest, Emily Little, who will be providing you both a presentation and a proclamation. So today, we are requesting that your board proclaim August 2023 as National Breastfeeding Month in Washington County. National Breastfeeding Month occurs annually in the month of August and represents a national celebration of breastfeeding efforts. These efforts include breastfeeding promotion, support, education, research, and normalizing breastfeeding as the gold standard of infant nutrition. The Public Health Advisory Council for Washington County is in support of this proclamation, and I will now turn it over to Jeanette for the presentation.
Hello, everybody. It's great to be in person. We did this, you know, via Zoom the last couple of years, and this is nice. Well, thank you for the opportunity for being here today. My name's Jeanette Corthell. My role at the county is as public health lactation consultant, and I work with the Women, Infants, and Children Program. My purpose here for being here today is to request that August once again be proclaimed as National Breastfeeding Month in Washington County. We get to click this, right? Okay. And a quick look at the breastfeeding services at Washington County show us that two programs exist to provide support for breastfeeding families. One is the Nurse Home Visiting Program, which is supported by the Maternal Child and Family or MCF team. The other is the Breastfeeding Peer Counseling Program, which is supported by the Women, Infants, and Children or WIC team. Both MCF and WIC can be found in Public Health, in the Public Health Division within Health and Human Services. This year was unique in that WIC and MCF had an opportunity to partner even further to facilitate meaningful change for breastfeeding families in Washington County. WIC and MCF came together to fund and support a nonprofit organization called Nurturely. Nurturely has the expertise and capacity to address the systemic gaps that have created barriers to equitable access to lactation and human milk feeding in Washington County through the development of a community-based, multi-sectoral Lactation Equity Coalition. The aim of the coalition is to remove structural barriers to breastfeeding within systems, organizations, and the community. The formation and launch of this cross-sector county-wide group brings together stakeholders, both within the perinatal care continuum, as well as outside, businesses and community leaders. The widespread adoption of policies, messages, and infrastructure will create a sense of cohesion and consistency across the system. Today, you're going to meet Dr. Emily Little, Executive Director and founder of Nurturely, and she will take you through the early evolution of Washington County's newly-formed Lactation Equity Coalition and plans for its future. I'll hand it over to Emily. Clicker?
Thank you all so much for having us today. I'm Emily Little. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a lactation and perinatal health equity researcher, and also started Nurturely with the goal of eliminating racial and cultural inequities in access to human milk and access to pregnancy and postpartum health and wellness for all parents and babies. So we're really proud and excited to share the work that we have been doing in partnership, not only with our two and three organizations, but really with the community as a whole. And what's especially exciting about this work is that it aligns so deeply with the priorities that have already been expressed through the Washington County Public Health Strategic Plan, specifically Priority One, Health Equity, engaging community members who are historically underrepresented, and I'll go through details of how we have incorporated each of these priorities into our work with the coalition. Priority Two being best and promising practices, using what we learned to make data-driven decisions. Priority Three, partnerships and engagement, co-creation, and following the community's lead on programs and services. And Priority Four, communication, working with the community to create seamless transitions for families by developing effective communication systems. So health equity is at the core of all of Nurturely's work, and our message and purpose in all activities of developing and stewarding the Lactation Equity Coalition are to share the message that human milk should be a human right. We know that is currently not the case. Above and beyond any barriers due to geography, due to economic situation, due to insurance access, racism is above and beyond one of the biggest barriers that parents and new babies face when having the option to feed their baby human milk or feed their baby with their body. As such, all activities of the coalition have been rooted in anti-racism and racial equity as a core guiding principle of all of our work. You can see here photos from our community-engaged workshops, where not only were we talking about the biggest barriers to lactation in Washington County, but we were talking about how, as a community, we are going to come together to center racial justice and racial equity in all activities of this newly-forming coalition. Number two, best and promising practices. Since its inception, this work has been guided by national recommendations, evidence-based practices, that, from my perspective as a lactation researcher, and from our partners' perspectives, professors at Portland State University, professors at Pacific University, it is core to this work to be able to put data behind the reasons for all of our decisions, but be able to do that in a way that is equitable and accessible to the rest of the community who may not have a research or evidence-based background, and also understanding what evidence-based means is different and dependent on culture and community. Partnerships and engagement has been key to this work from day one. Coalitions are really about building power through building relationships, and that has guided all of our work. You can see here photos from our community-based information sessions, where we partnered with local business owners, community leaders, and made a presence that was accessible for the community. We were able to do our activities out in restaurants, and specifically working with Black-owned and Latinx-owned restaurants to be able to not only bring in economic support, but also just to share that this work is not just for public health professionals. This work is not just for perinatal health researchers. This work is for everyone, and it impacts business owners, it impacts community leaders at all aspects of our community. So lastly, the communication piece, these are identified priorities based on the chosen work of our coalition members. So moving forward with the coalition, we are focusing on care coordination, which aligns with national priorities. with national priorities on the biggest gaps in access to lactation and human milk. We'll also focus on workforce development, making sure that we have a representative and equity-centered workforce to support lactating parents, lactating-friendly public spaces, businesses, restaurants out in the community. And then, of course, racial equity in lactation being a cross-cutting principle throughout all of our priorities moving forward. So with that, we are thrilled to invite all of you to come to our community launch celebration. This is happening Wednesday, August 30th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. It will be a free, community-centered celebration where we'll be able to share more about this work and invite involvement from people at all levels and all sectors of the community. This is happening during Black Breastfeeding Week, which is a specific segment of National Breastfeeding Month, so it's really exciting to be able to share this with you all and share it with the rest of the community.
All right. I just wanted to thank Dr. Little again for joining us today, and I want to acknowledge her tireless commitment to a partnership that always leads with and centers equity. It's always a reminder, you know, anything we're doing, we always ground ourselves in this equity work. So, yeah, thank you. And I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for allowing us this opportunity to bring awareness to the importance of breastfeeding as a primary public health prevention strategy. And finally, I'd like to request that August 2023 be proclaimed as National Breastfeeding Month in Washington County. I will now go on to read the proclamation. Proclamation, Board of Commissioners for Washington County, National Breastfeeding Month Proclamation, August 1st, 2023. Whereas Washington County recognizes access to human milk as a human rights issue and increasing equitable access to human milk results in resilient, healthy, and engaged children, families, and communities. And whereas Washington County recognizes breastfeeding is the preferred source of nutrition for infants, adapting over time to meet the changing needs of the growing infant. Breastfeeding also protects both infants and lactating parents from a host of chronic and acute diseases and conditions, and builds a foundation for lifelong health and wellness. The county's breastfeeding support programs are committed to providing education and resources to help families make informed infant feeding choices through classes, text messaging, one-on-one peer counseling, nurse home visiting, and connections to accessible educational information. And whereas Washington County recognizes the complex web of support and physical factors needed for breastfeeding to be successful and acknowledges those individuals unable to meet their breastfeeding goals often due to circumstances beyond their control. These individuals persevere by making the best infant feeding choices for themselves and their families. And whereas Washington County recognizes historical and current barriers to human milk access are rooted in systemic racism. Our county's efforts to combat the effects of systemic racism and further our shared goals towards diversity, equity, and inclusion aligns with national efforts to increase human milk access for all infants. And whereas Washington County recognizes that protecting and supporting lactation and human milk access represents an opportunity for cross-sector engagement of a variety of stakeholders. Strong community partnerships have been forged between Washington County Public Health, community-based organizations, lactation champions, families, and local healthcare providers in the development and launch of our new local Lactation Equity Coalition. And whereas Washington County is stronger when infants are provided a safe, reliable, and renewable food source, which is especially critical during natural disasters, formula shortages, emergencies, and traumatic events. Efforts to support climate resilience, climate mitigation, and emergency preparedness and response planning will be more effective when also advancing equitable access to human milk. And whereas, this is our why, is this year's National Breastfeeding Month theme, and our collective why is to change systems, policies, and practices to address lactation inequities, advance health equity, uplift local experience and wisdom, and empower racially and linguistically diverse breastfeeding communities through distributed leadership. Washington County is committed to helping shine a light on why this work is so important and connects our local conversations and our Lactation Equity Coalition with national awareness and advocacy opportunities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this first day of August 2023, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim August as National Breastfeeding Month in Washington County. Supporting equitable human milk access intersects with our county's goals for racial equity, family inclusion, healthy parents, and nurtured infants. Join us in this shared county-wide commitment to protecting, promoting, and sustaining breastfeeding and human milk access. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for attending in person. It's great to see you in person as well, but really shining a light and, as you say, explaining that this is our why. This is very important work, and I also want to give credit the Housing, Health, and Human Services Department, as well as our Sheriff Department. We're the two departments that really helped lead our way as a complete one-Washington County agency in the work of centering equity in all of our work. So thank you very much for that and continuing to do that and pressing forward in all matters. So commissioners, what are your comments and/or wishes for adopting today's proclamation?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you so much for your presentation today. This is so important. Healthy starts for our children is just crucial, and the work that you're doing from the equity standpoint is outstanding. Addressing the stigma, addressing the educational needs, addressing the opportunities, all of that is so important. So thank you, thank you very much for your work for generations to come.
Yes, thank you. What I appreciate about proclamations is the background and the history that we get. So I learn every time we have one of these and there's a staff presentation like yours, I learn a lot. And so this is a little bit intriguing to me of when you say breastfeeding and systemic racism. How did you, how did you, where did your research start for you to get to start this new program? And I mean, how did we get there? So educate me, the white male that doesn't know anything about this stuff hardly, you know, just a couple of kids and that's it. But, I mean, how did you get there?
Thank you for that question. So we actually have decades now of data that have really pieced apart the effects and the inequities of all of the other social determinants of health that we have. As I mentioned, access to insurance, urban versus rural, income status, all of these pieces. But we actually have very clear data now showing that racism is a factor above and beyond all of these additional social determinants of health that is affecting not only who has the choice to feed their baby human milk or feed their baby with their body, but really all aspects of the perinatal health continuum. So in our country today, Black birthing parents are three to four times more likely to die of pregnancy-related causes than their white counterparts. And this is actually irrespective of education, income, access, such that a Black woman with her PhD is, and high income, and private insurance is more likely to be at risk for maternal mortality in comparison with a white teen parent who is high school-educated and on public insurance. And so that's one example from the perinatal health continuum more broadly. But when we look at lactation specifically, we can see that the biases in care, again, are independent of all of these other social determinants that are also so important, such that Black babies in the hospital are actually nine times more likely to be supplemented with formula than their white counterparts. Again, this is controlling for medical need, parental choice, all of these other pieces. And so these data very clearly point to biases in our systems, and the first step towards changing those is to recognize and name those and work to make sure that racial justice is centered in everything that we do. And of course, that's current day where we are working on the historical traumas of enslavement and how body feeding and lactation was actually used as a tool for oppression, really, in the history of our country as well. So we're working against a lot, but we believe at Nurturely that we can have solutions to all of these pieces, but making sure that the anti-racism piece is centered is critical. But thank you for that question.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. We, when we first came on as commissioners in 2019, we toured WIC, and it was very impressive. Haven't been back there, so maybe I need to do a refresh, but yeah, I think they do a great job. So thank you for your historical background on that, and it's good information. Thank you.
Commissioner Fai?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions for you all. I just wanted to appreciate all the work you're doing and say, great presentation and great proclamation, and you all are making a difference. You all here in Washington County and your partners out there throughout the community and throughout the nation. I recently noticed a thing called the mother's room. I think earlier years of my kids' having years, I would say, and my kids are not that old either, they're very young, but I was used to lactation rooms and not mother's rooms. And recently, through Clean Water Services tour that myself and another commissioner and other staff did was shown or given the opportunity to learn about mother's room because one of the buildings had a sign that said "Mother's Room." And so I learned that that day, and then now I can and see them. I noticed them throughout the airport. I recently went to a conference, noticed them, big signs. It was just right there. So when I say you are all making a difference, you are. I think the idea of inclusion is happening and really centering, and I appreciate you elevating the conversation about equity. And I think of the question Commissioner Willie asked, I think it's a clear sign that through these dialogues is how we build bridges, so I would encourage you all to reach out and take up on the offer to tour, but also to continue this dialogue and to learn together and to build these bridges and, you know, make sure Black mothers aren't dying, one, and equity is centered and everybody's saved. So thank you.
I would also like to invite our community members to join us at the community event on Monday, August, excuse me, Wednesday, August 31st at, gee, I wrote it down, Summer Lake Park. I think I'm working from memory here, from 4:30 to 6:30 in Tigard, to learn more about the benefits and support for supporting lactating parents or for those of you who may be considering becoming parents into the future, please know that information and support is available to you. So I would ask my colleagues for a motion to proclaim August 2023 as National Breastfeeding Month in Washington County.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero, and I would like to invite our guests to join us as the board, just to memorialize this opportunity should such a photographic asset be useful in continued communications. Thank you. All righty then. Next, we'll move on to boards and commissions. We have an opportunity to appoint two new members to our Advisory Council on Racial Equity. That would be Fernando Lyra and Ebony Samuels to serve on the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. What are the wishes of the commission?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you very much, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And don't worry, folks, we reviewed those applications and the membership at a work session recently, so we are just moving through our business today to formalize all of that. Next, we're moving on to public hearings. We have three public hearings today, and the first one is related to procedures and management for the Washington County Lean Docket. Boy, exciting title, but it is important work that our county government does. So we have two ordinances that are related to the work we do with records and such. So we have two expert members of our legal team here with us, and so I'd like to turn it over to them for presentations. But first, I need a motion so that we can read Ordinance 894 by title only. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr?
Chair Harrington. Ordinance 894, an ordinance adopting Chapter 2.38 of the Washington County Code, establishing procedures for management and use of the county lean docket.
Thank you. Please, team.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. Board of Commissioners, for the record, my name is Jason Bush, and I am Assistant County Counsel for Washington County.
For the record, my name is Courtney Duke-Dressen, Deputy County Counsel.
And we come to you today for a presentation on ordinances 894 and 895. At the outset, we acknowledged that having a presentation on two ordinances at once is uncommon, but in this case, they're so closely related, as we'll get into in a second, we thought that it makes the most sense to present it this way. So going to the background of what we're here for under these two particular ordinances, without necessarily having to go into all the history, what we can say is LIDs under the Bancroft Bonding Act over 100 years ago created a process such that the local improvement district levies could be assessed and charged as a financing tool against the benefited properties outside of our tax, our general tax system or tax structure, though there is a similar system that exists where these can be certified to the role and treated as taxes. Fast forward to the implementation of this process for Washington County specifically, and what we see is the administration of the non-tax LID assessment system historically has been done through A&amp;T, our Assessment and Taxation here at the county. Over the course of the last several years, what we find is that while we have a very specific system in Assessment and Taxation for the assessment, levy, collection, and enforcement of our tax system through our Orion system, that system does not house or implement this particular non-tax system. It wasn't built or designed for that as a non-tax LID system. So the lean docket, which is what we call this and which is how it's referred to in the code, is basically housed in an access database within A&amp;T and is treated separately. So for the last several years, that has been a number of discussions about the best way to administer this docket for these nontaxable LIDs. That has included Clean Water Services, LUT at the outset, as well as Finance and A&amp;T. And a decision came forward that going forward, it makes the most sense from an administrative perspective to administer these through Finance as opposed to A&amp;T. And then conversely, last year, when we had a cleaner break with Clean Water Services on the financial part, they are actually implementing a lot of their own Bancroft bonded LIDs specifically, which is why if you look at the last piece of that, there's 20 remaining LIDs administered under this system. It's essentially our lowest number in quite a while due to that break. But we do want to make it clear that that number could go up quite a bit in the future if another major development comes through, and this would be the chosen financing tool for that. So, just from an administrative perspective, now is essentially the ideal time to try to implement these changes. And I'm going to turn it over to Courtney.
So, as Mr. Bush just acknowledged, a couple of years ago, we really convened a one-Washington County team comprised up of A&amp;T, Department of Finance. We also had LUT at the table, Land Use and Transportation, obviously our office, to try and look and see at how we could optimize our process of these LID assessments. We looked not only to state law, but also out to other jurisdictions to see what best practices they were implementing that we could adopt. So, the purpose of this slide is to summarize what the current process is and what the process will be after your board considers and if your board adopts these two ordinances. So, as you can see from the information in front of you, the process for LIDs will largely stay the same and really we're only revising or changing the fourth step. LID will always still originate or initiate when there's a community need and there's an identified public improvement or service that the county can deliver. Then your board will engage in a pretty extensive public process where you'll consider that improvement. You will have some public hearings to determine what properties are benefited. You'll order the improvement completed and levy assessments. When we get to the stage where the property owners pay back the county for implementing the improvement, you know that they can either pay in a lump sum or over these 10 years. So, as Jason, and so then focusing on that fourth bullet point or box, you'll see that we are proposing going from A&amp;T managing these accounts with this access database. Another important point that we will go into in a few more slides is that historically, these delinquent assessments, which automatically become liens, have not been recorded in the county permanent property records, which can be problematic because it's usually the first place that title companies or other lien holders will go to see what other interests are in the property. So, our proposed best practice proposal, which we implemented by these two ordinances, is to assign this work to the Department of Finance. They will use a function-specific software, and we will add in and make clear that the recording of these liens can occur. Like you.
So, in terms of the primary functional difference between Ordinance 894 and 895, to boil it down to its most basic component parts, we would say under 894, that's really the mechanism in which we would be moving this from A&amp;T to Finance on the administrative side. And under 895, as Courtney mentioned, we would make it clear that this type of lien or financing tool would be recorded in the county lien record as opposed to just being housed within the lien docket as the access database, as its record. There is some, we would say that there's some ambiguity right now whether or not the current liens could be recorded in the county lien record. But to make, just to make it clear, we wanted to be expressly stated as explained under 895. And the ultimate goal would be to change the process so that eventually our liens would actually be recorded in the county lien system.
So, sorry, there's a lot of information on this slide, but I believe you've seen this information before. So, really, at its core, we're asking your board to consider moving an administrative function from one department to another county department. So, you may be asking yourself, "Why so much work? Why two ordinances?" But as we've looked and worked on optimizing our process, really this slide is to show you how each ordinance gets us to those efficiency outcomes. So, just very briefly, because you've already heard this, as a financing and collection tool, this work is best suited for the Department of Finance. So, unfortunately, our current code talks a lot about this work being assigned to the Department of Assessment and Taxation. So, we are going to use both Ordinance 894 to create that lien docket that Jason has spoken about, Mr. Bush has spoken about, and 895 to update the existing portions of our code that need to be updated to reflect the change. The other, the next efficiency outcome achieved by these ordinances is the creation of the centralized lien docket. Again, several places in the code talk about a county lien docket. But to be honest, when we started this work, no one really knew what it was or what it did or where it lived. So, 894 will make a centralized lien docket with established procedures for its use and management that can be used countywide. This is a transparency and efficiency tool. And then finally, the last efficiency outcome has to do with enforcement. Under current law, the only way we can enforce these outstanding liens is through a judicial foreclosure, which is the same way any lien holder would try and get delinquent amounts and similar to like the way a bank would foreclose on a property for failure to pay a mortgage. But when we looked at our outstanding, the outstanding balances of our open accounts, they were for amounts that made this enforcement mechanism unfavorable. But while we really want to do collect, we really do want to collect these sums that are due to the county. So, this recording piece is going to be a critical component of that because it'll allow us one more enforcement tool with very little county resources expended. So, Ordinance 895, again, makes clear that these liens can be recorded and picked up when people look at property records and consider financial transactions related to real property.
Alright. So, going through the advantages of the system, I know that Courtney just talked about a lot of the efficiency issues. But I think from a very high level, both Finance and A&amp;T would agree that ideally, we want our taxes to be administered and enforced through the Tax Department and our financial charges and fee system, similar to the transit lodging tax, to be administered through Finance. And really, that's one of the driving forces behind this. It's just to make it cleaner and clearer that tax is responsible for tax and finance is responsible for finance. And what we see from that is that this actually aligns more closely with other partners that utilize a similar tool throughout the state, where oftentimes this type of financing tool is actually implemented through cities. And most often, well, cities rarely if ever have Assessment and Finance or Assessment and Tax Departments, whereas they often have Finance Departments that would implement this. So, title companies, et cetera, would already know sort of to look to a similar process here at the county. So, we're trying to align our system with the primary users of this type of tool at the outset. And then that goes to that third point, which was Courtney was making previously, about the collection of the delinquent assessments without the judicial action. If it's recorded in our county lien record system, that is the first line of defense for lien holders and others to look to that area of recording to see what are the existing obligations due on the property and make sure that those obligations or those liens are paid off before any type of real property transaction would occur, which is not necess, we haven't had a problem with this, to my knowledge. But I mean, it's not intuitive to go to a separate, completely different docket outside of the county lien recording system to check on those type of liens. So, then going to the last point about the allocation of county resources and the effects on property owners. The reality is, we don't anticipate there being a big difference, in particular for property owners, whether this is administered through the Tax Department or through the Finance Department in terms of any type of cost on them. If anything, it should be more efficient if administered through Finance. And then in terms of the resources that are being utilized right now to administer this program, it's estimated at less than a .25. So, the transition should hopefully breathe pretty smooth on that end because we are, well, at least right now, we're dealing with a very low number of these. But as we said at the outset, that number could go up in the future. So, the idea is just to have a very efficient process in place if we do get more of these going forward.
So, that brings us to the end of our presentation for you today. Just a reminder, we were here in first reading. A couple of weeks ago, we would ask you to have finished the public hearing for 894 and then have a public hearing on 895. And just a reminder that if these ordinances are passed, they will become effective approximately September 1st. And just wanted to share that Finance and A&amp;T have been working together for years on this project and are continuing that work should these ordinance be adopted to make a smooth transition. And we're set up to do that if we go forward today. Are there any questions for us?
Misses?
Yes, a couple of questions. I understand we're just, whether it's one department or another department, that's immaterial. And I understand the collectability is probably the same under law. Is there note different that you're going to sign? And is the assessment going to be on the property tax bill?
No, these assessments will not be on the property tax bill. Everything will stay the same. We will just record a lien down in, down at County, down at the County Clerk's Office. But no, these will still be billed through Finance separately from a tax bill.
Commissioner Thrice?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. On page three, the very top box, why did the, nothing changed in this chart until the bottom, but the sponsor did change?
Right, because previously, which, sorry, we didn't touch on it very quickly. We used to administer Clean Water Services, and I'm not sure why it says CSL. I think it's supposed to be CW. Sorry for that typo.
That explains it.
Yes, but they are now doing their own administration of these accounts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Thank you, staff. We'll then move on. We've had the second reading of Ordinance 894. I'd like to open a public hearing on this ordinance. Clerk Moss, could we take the presentation away, please?
Yes, we can, Madam Chair. And I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium. Would any member like to provide comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the presentation from our county council staff, give you just a moment to raise your hand or start coming forward. Not seeing anyone in the room. Would any members online, via Zoom, wish to provide public comment on the presentation you've heard today from staff? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close the public hearing. Clerk Moss, could you please take, oh, excuse me, we need a motion to, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 894. Clerk Moss, roll call, please.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Thrice?
Yes.
Commissioner Phi?
Aye.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The ordinance passes unanimously five to zero. We'll next move on to Ordinance 895. Could we have a motion to read this ordinance by title only?
Move. Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr?
An ordinance amending the Washington County Code relating to instruments authorized for recording and amending the Washington County Code to reflect other, and to reflect other minor changes.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. We've already had the staff report on Ordinance 895. So, at this juncture, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up. Would any member in the auditorium like to provide public comment on this public hearing? The second said, as you heard the presentation from staff. Not seeing anyone raise your hand or coming forward. Would any members online wish to provide comment as the presentation, as you've heard from staff? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close today's public hearing on Ordinance 895. Clerk Moss, oh, excuse me, do we have a motion to adopt Ordinance 895?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk Moss, roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Commissioner Phi?
Aye.
Commissioner Thrice?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The ordinance carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to our third public hearing. This is to consider the annexation of two tax lots and right-of-way totaling approximately five acres to Clean Water Services. I'd like to turn this over to our Land Use and Transportation staff. Welcome. It's good to see you.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Brian Robb with Land Use and Transportation. And I'll be giving a brief presentation on proposed boundary change 23-002, which is a request to annex two properties into Clean Water Services. The properties are located in the southeastern part of the county, within the River Terrace Community Plan area of Tigard. The subject properties are shown here in the dark gray. They're approximately five acres in size, located on the west side of Southwest 150th Avenue. And the light gray area, which is kind of hard to see here, is the current extent of the Clean Water Services boundary today. This proposal is a request by CTH Investments LLC to annex two tax lots and right-of-way into the Clean Water Services District. The request was initiated by a consent petition of 100% of the property owners. County staff has reviewed the request and found that it meets the criteria for boundary changes as outlined in the staff report. Staff recommends that the board conduct the public hearing and at the conclusion of the public hearing, approve the resolution in order with the annexation becoming effective immediately. With that, I conclude my presentation and can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Commissioners, do we have any questions on this matter? Alright, with that then, I will open a public hearing. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium. Would any members in the auditorium of this meeting wish to provide comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the presentation from the staff. Not seeing anyone raise their hand or coming forward. Would any members online, via Zoom, like to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the presentation from staff. Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with this, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt and authorize the chair to sign the resolution in order approving annexation of two tax lots and right-of-way totaling approximately five acres to Clean Water Services.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to the actions section of our agenda. And here we have a whole nother ordinance. Do we have a motion to read Ordinance 898 by title only?
So moved.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr?
Chair Harrington. An ordinance, excuse me, Ordinance 898, an ordinance codifying resolutions and orders governing the county council's office and repealing resolution and orders numbers 87-49, 89-33, 96-65, 99-39, and 10-115.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Do we have a staff report?
I'll give you a very brief staff report. This is something that the board considered at the December 1st, 2022 roundtable. It was my recommendation that, in the interest of transparency and clarity, that the resolutions in order that govern the processes of the county council's office be codified in the Washington County Code. These things, these deal with things like waiving conflicts for outside counsel, hiring outside counsel, initiating litigation. There's a more extensive report scheduled this afternoon at the work session. I've asked the board's indulgence to do these on the same day because this would be the only way to have a second reading of this ordinance before I retire on September 1st.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Carr at this time?
Okay. So, we've conducted our first reading and
Okay, so we've conducted our first reading, and so I would ask for a motion to continue Ordinance 898 to the August 15th board meeting, where we will have a second reading and a first public hearing and potential action.
Excuse me. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero.
Chair Harrington, can I ask a clarifying question, Kevin? Is there an August 15th board meeting, Kevin?
There is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, that takes us to our second public comment period of today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to speak to us for up to five minutes a person. Clerk Moss?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the room, but I'd like to open the opportunity for anyone in the auditorium to provide public comment on any county-related topic for up to five minutes. Not seeing anyone raising hands or coming forward. Any members online wish to provide comment for up to five minutes on any county-related topic? Give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move to board announcements. Our future meetings are thus. This Thursday, August 3rd, we have a roundtable that starts at 9:00 a.m. Excuse me, next week, Tuesday, August 8th, is work session day. That meeting will start at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, August 15th, we'll start our work session at 9:00, then reconvene later after we have our board meeting at 10:00 a.m. Tuesday, August 22nd, we'll have a work session in the afternoon starting at 2:00, and a board meeting that evening at 6:30. And then, this is a month where we have five Tuesdays, and on Tuesday, August 29th, we will not be having any Board of Commissioner meetings. That brings us to the end of today's agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn today's business meeting?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. We are hereby adjourned. Thank you.